It's seven o'clock. I will call to order the August 15th meeting of the common council. Mr. Schwartz, will you lead us in the pledge?
A pledge religious to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lee, will you call the roll?
Mr. Air?
Present.
Mr. Boyce?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. O'Connor?
Present.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Present.
Mr. Sparks?
Present.
Ms. Wilds?
Present.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
Mr. President, have a question.
Thank you. Approval of the executive session memorandum from our July 25th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the executive session memorandum from our July 25th meeting. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. I know. Approval of the minutes from our July 25th meeting?
Moved to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve our minutes from our July 25th meeting. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. I know. Approval of our minutes from our August 1st budget meeting?
Moved to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes from our August 1st budget meeting. It's a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. I know. Approval of our minutes from our August 8th budget meeting?
Moved to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes from our August 8th budget meeting. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. I know. Approval of the agenda?
Mr. President? Mr. President, I would move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve our agenda as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. I know. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present? I have one from Mr. Murphy, if he'd like to speak now. Just need your name and address for the record.
My name is Terry Murphy. My wife and I live at 5355 East 161st Street. I have a comment and then a question for the council. I want to congratulate Mr. O'Connor and Mr. Air, who I met. Mr. O'Connor, before he became a councilman. Mr. Air, I met right after he became a councilman and we went through a lot of proper land use debates. But I wanted to congratulate them on their retirement and their service. I had the pleasure of going through a BZA hearing last Monday. And I'm going to ask you the same question that I asked the BZA. There's a parcel of SR land, three acres. It is in front of the BZA for variance of development standards from an R1. Because they want 130 versus a 200-foot lot width. How do we do a BZA hearing and give a variance on a parcel that's not even rezoned yet? I mean, it's the cart before the horse, or the horse is backing them into the barn. But I just don't understand how that works. Is that the first thing that I saw? Is it, we're going to get a BZA acceptance for this property? And then it's going to go for rezone to an R1? So that we're going to then turn around and have a variance of the development, the bulk standards? And I just, that, it just doesn't look right to me. But I'm not the one, so.
What was the zone to begin with? Did you say SR?
It's SR. It's going to a sewer behind Wedgwood, so they get 200 feet. They're going commercial. There's already a house being built on it. They want to divide it into three lots. A year ago, it went for 100 grand an acre. That's, we need the reaffirmation of the bulk requirements. But that's for another evening. I don't understand this process of BZA variance before the land is even rezoned? Is that, is that how we do business? I mean, it would kind of, kind of be like giving a grandma kiss before you get to the door. I just, I don't understand it. So I, they attempted to answer that question. And it's probably in my psyche and how I understand things. But I, I don't understand it. So if you could help me with that, I'd appreciate it.
It's a new one on me, so I don't know that I've heard this process before. But I'm going to leave it to our city attorney to tell us.
Sure. Mr. President, I'm happy to answer that question as best I can. So this property is going forward both as a rezone to the R1 and as needing a variance. And so sort of if one happens, the other one still needs to happen. And so we went forward with both processes sort of simultaneously. And the variance is conditioned upon it being rezoned. So it's just a condition that the rezone also has to happen. The BZA said, provided that it's rezoned to R1, they agree with the variance standard being given as well. So that's why it kind of came through on this process. But it is conditioned upon the rezone occurring as well.
Running parallel tracks?
They're running on parallel tracks. But it's two different processes. Rezone has to go to plan commission and then to this board. Whereas BZA would give the variance. So they're basically giving their blessing to a variance, provided that the rezone goes through. And if it doesn't, then they can't, they can't construct as they want to on that property. Both have to happen.
Thank you.
As I guess, we will see in the future.
But to talk about it before it's even, there's a process that should go through. Everybody knows that. This is giving a grant ahead of even the land being done. And that's the problem I have. I've been here for 22 years. Ryan, I worked in the system and that. When you guys do stuff like this, it doesn't look real good. I mean, it's, it's not, it needs to be rezoned. It should be a process, a rezone, then you get a variance. If you don't have the zoning to get a variance on. It's, it's me. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
Thank you. Moving on to committee reports. Mr. Boyce with Rhodes?
Thank you, Aaron. We had Rhodes Committee on the 4th of this month. And we talked a little bit about the road assessment tool. We now have, are hiring out a road assessment tool that will drive all of the roads of Noblesville. It assesses the roads to see how they are, what gives them all a ranking. This is something that we used to have people drive and just do personally. But this is pretty cool. A tool actually does it and looks underneath the pavement and everything to make sure how the engineering is down underneath it. Should be really good. So it's going to take nine days, which that should be over by now, to drive every road in Noblesville. And then after it finished with us, we're actually using the same assessment company that Carmel, Fishers, and Westfield use. So they're going to go to them next, which should allow us to compare against our local neighbors too, how our roads are, which I think will be a nice, nice thing for us to look at and for everyone to look at, so we know where we sit according to those. The River Road, State Road 32 roundabout opened the day before this meeting. So hopefully many of you have been able to go around that in circles now. It is only one lane so far going east and west, but that should be opening here fairly soon. They're still doing some concrete work there. But at least you can now go all the way around it. Traffic is still not perfect over there, not as good as we would like. But we think it's going to be a lot better once we do get the two lanes going east-west. Or at least the engineering department believes that's, that's going to help a lot, so. For those of you on pins and needles about our electrocution, I mean our electrical pedestrian bridge. They have put caulk on the little snaps that kind of hold those boards in place. And they actually have put a new Trex-type cover over the arms to see how that works. So we're kind of testing that to see if that is better. I have not, I ran across it, but I have not really tested it much. I don't know if Mr. Davis has any opinions on that. But it does look okay, what they did, so we'll see. Hopefully that fixes it and we don't have to redo everything. But we will see what next steps are. Pleasant Street Phase Two, or Phase One, the curbs have been lowered. So that is moving forward. And we've gotten only good feedback so far on that. So everything looks good. And the meeting was complete 10 minutes early, which probably has something to do with the fact that Mr. Air was not in attendance at this meeting. So that's all I have, Mr. President.
Any questions for Mr. Boyce? Move on to public safety. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. We met Wednesday, August 9th. Pete Schwartz, Dan Sparks, Mark Boyce, and myself. The meeting started with Chad Connect talking to us about the staff, how the staff has grown because the city is growing. Businesses and residents are being added. And some of the growth has little impact on police department, but a huge impact on the fire department because of different responsibilities. Funding, more staff can be a challenge, but they are needed now. And because it could take up 18 months to two years to train new hires, the departments have to be very proactive. Chief Mitchell talked to us about the map of all the Noblesville Fire Protection Districts and location of stations within the districts. He reviewed coverage of each district. And stated Station 73 is the only station not in the center of the district. And that district is by far the busiest. So it, that's one of the focal points we're looking into in the future. Assistant Chief Brad Arnold talked to us about the police department. And with the large influx of development in the southeast quadrant of the city, which includes Hamilton Town Center, approximately 4,800 units have been approved for construction. And it is important for the police department to keep up the growth on the east end of the city. He stated six new patrol officers are included in the budget, but all four divisions of the department need to grow. A new investigator is needed, one sergeant will be added, and an additional training officer is needed. He stated crime is increasing in Fishers and Carmel. And the police department, the Noblesville Police Department is working very proactively to prevent crime in Noblesville. He reviewed decreases in vehicular accidents and increases in arrests in traffic stops. He stated patrol officers are balancing responding to calls and proactively preventing crime. And one note, our Noble Act provides a team with a police officer and a paramedic right now. And soon, a social worker will be added to that to help root causes and provide social services needed to prevent crime. It's a very proactive approach. That was it. And the meeting was very productive and lasted about an hour, a little over an hour. That's it.
Any questions for Mr. Davis? Not, we'll move on to finance. Mr. O'Connor?
Thank you, Mr. President. The finance committee met August 10th. All members were present. The, two of the primary items in the meeting, the first being, I believe it's Resolution 3823, which is on our agenda tonight, is miscellaneous number three. Is the Pulte Homes and TWG Development, which is on Oleo and Bowden, 156, 166th Street. I know we've all seen this, looked at it. It's been five years in the making. There's about, and I'll let Mr. Murray elaborate on this. But I think there's somewhere in the vicinity of north of $400 million in new assessed value in this project, and it may be a little north of that. But suffice to say, it's a significant move forward on the east side. It brings infrastructure into the area. It'll help facilitate what we, I think, want to do going forward. Includes drainage, sewage, enhancement of the road system on the east side. So this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation from the finance committee. The next item we discussed was the Pleasant Street EDA, which is our Resolution RC 3723. This has to do with incorporating the parcels that were part of the Stony Creek Tiff. If you recall, in '17, we passed that for those that were on the council at the time. We needed to add the parcels from the Stony Creek Tiff into the Pleasant Street Tiff. So that's essentially what that is all about. So that also comes to you with a favorable recommendation. And then Mr. Spalding reviewed the, I guess I'll call it the postmortem on the bond issuance for the, for the Bastion Solutions Project on 146th Street. That was a $9 million bond. That was our participation in the project for the ground and infrastructure for the project. I think the average rate on the bonds was 4.6%, which is, in this environment, fairly favorable for, for us. So that bond deal closed, I wouldn't say a few weeks ago. But didn't really have any other major items. The claims come to you with a favorable recommendation. So that's the report, Mr. President.
Any questions for Mr. O'Connor?
Mr. President, I would move to approve the claims.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the claims. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. I know. Miscellaneous number one, we will.
Do you need a motion to postpone that?
You can just reschedule it, right?
Yeah.
Okay. We're going to reschedule that for later. Miscellaneous number one, council to hear a report from Noblesville Main Street, which will be rescheduled to a later date. Previously discussed ordinances. Council to consider ordinance number 21-07-23, an ordinance authorizing the City of Noblesville, Indiana to fund its taxable economic development revenue note, Series 2023, and approving and authorizing other actions in respect there to Ms. Reed.
Good evening. I don't have a formal presentation, but I'm here in case you have any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Reed? Not, we just need a motion?
Mr. President, I would move to approve ordinance 210723.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 21-07-23. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The ordinances are approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Miscellaneous number two, council to consider Resolution RC-37-23, a resolution ratifying and approving a declaratory resolution and economic development plan of the Redevelopment Commission, establishing the Pleasant Street Economic Development Area. Two, a declaratory resolution for the Redevelopment Commission, amending the Stony Creek East Economic Development Area. An economic development plan to permit the establishment of the Pleasant Street Economic Development Area. And three, the order of the Plan Commission related there to Mr. Hughes.
Well, I think the president said everything there is to say about this one.
Words count.
It's all right there in the title.
Yeah.
As Counselor O'Connor indicated, this is regarding the Pleasant Street Tiff. The blue area, on this light blue area on the map that's here, shows the previous Stony Creek area. Pink area being the new Pleasant Street Tiff. All this was done in 2017. And we're just asking for your approval of this resolution so that we can continue to collect the increment in this area. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Hughes?
Mr. President, I would move to approve Resolution RC 3723.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Resolution RC-37-23. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. I know. Thank you very much. Miscellaneous number three, council to consider Resolution RC-38-23, a resolution approving an economic development agreement for a mixed-use development located along Bowden Road, 166th Street, Oleo Road, and 156th Street. Oleo Road, and 156th Street.
Thank you, President Smith, Members of Council, Andrew Murray, Economic Development Director. For the record, I am pleased to stand before you this evening to present Resolution 38-23 that would approve an economic development agreement to develop over 600 acres, specifically 603 acres, in a partnership with Pulte Homes and TWG in East Noblesville. As Councilman O'Connor alluded to earlier in your meeting, this project really has been a long time coming, five years to be exact, from annexations to a lot of time, commitment, and energy to sanitary sewer planning. So, I think it's fair to say that this is the culmination of a collaborative effort between city professionals and our developer partners. Would like to recognize our partners tonight with us. On behalf of Pulte is Mr. David Compton and Mr. Rex Ramage. With TWG, Chase Smith is representing his company, and then along with their development team members. Certainly appreciate those gentlemen's time and effort today. That includes a lot of commitment, persistence, and flexibility in getting to where we are today. To quickly orient you to the, the project site, to the, to the east is Oleo Road, to the south is 156th Street, to the west is Bowden Road, and to the north is 166, or I'm sorry, yeah, 166th Street. The project, and I'll start by colors. The orange and yellow area, this is the Dell Webb product, which is the active adult, age-restricted component. As presented, there will be 690 units. So, that is Area A, the orange and yellow lots. Moving to Area B, the bluish color, those are 535 traditional single-family units. I would note the darker blue shade. That is a commitment from our developer for 72 lots with an 80-foot width. That would include a three-car side-load garage component on those lots. Moving to Area C, which is pink, this is a specialty, single-family detached home unit. As presented in the agreement, 110 units are permissible. We will move to Area D, which is at the, the corner of the north, the northeast corner of 156 and Bowden. This is where TWG will develop 295 market-rate multifamily units with some opportunity in, in future Phase Two for an additional 200 market-rate multifamily units, as well as 100 for-sale-type product. And then lastly, this, this project has 10,000 square feet of commercial retail contemplated. So, as you can see, it is a massive opportunity, massive development. Some of the highlights and goals accomplished with this project, again, this is projected to be $475 million investment in this project with an estimated market value of $700 million. This project really kicks off and unlocks opportunity in Wayne Township. It's a multi-generational master plan development that includes state-of-the-art amenities, including a 14,000-square-foot amenities center in the, in the center of the Dell Webb product. And then lastly, with this project and partnership, we are receiving intentional investment in perimeter road and trail improvements to the project site, and I'm going to walk through those commitments and timing real quickly. So, the dark blue, those are existing infrastructure improvements. So, that's the, the roundabout at 156 and Bowden Road. The green shade, by, by end of 2024, the developer will do road widening and full overlay. That is a 12-foot driveline with two-foot shoulder. That will only be installed on the project site. That is not the full roadway. And then you can see through the, the red dotted line, that is 10-foot asphalt trail infrastructure. So, those are commitments by end of 2024. By 2026, again, dark blue is infrastructure improvements completed. You see additional 10-foot asphalt trail improvements along further Bowden Road frontage. And then we have a partnership planned with Federal Highway Department for a future roundabout. And as part of this agreement, Pulte would contribute our portion in that matching opportunity. And then lastly, to complete the full perimeter of the project site, again, by 2028, we have additional road widening and resurfacing, as well as additional perimeter asphalt trail infrastructure improvements being made as part of this project. So, what's our role in this partnership? We are asking the council to make an investment in this project, specifically in the form of issuing developer Tiff bonds that would produce a not-to-exceed amount of $10.8 million, and we would pledge 90% of the tax increment generated from this project towards payment of the debt service. Our infrastructure, or I'm sorry, our investment would go towards, as I just alluded to, significant infrastructure, you know, cost as part of this project. So, with that, I will stop there. This project, again, was vetted with Councilman O'Connor and this council's Finance Committee, and it comes to you with favorable support. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time. Otherwise, I can invite Mr. Compton up here to read the council.
Any questions for Mr. Murray before Mr. Compton comes up?
Mr. President, I don't remember Andrew, in the, and maybe Mr. Compton can address this, but what's the final estimated build-out on this?
I believe it's 10 years, is that... 10 years is the estimated build-out time.
It'd be 33?
Yes.
Or thereabouts. Checking your math skills.
I forgot my calculator in the office, sorry.
Tens are tough.
Any other pressing questions for Mr. Murray before Mr. Compton comes up? Yep.
Mr. Murray, included in the package, there's an agreement, City of Noblesville, Stony Creek, non-binding term sheet. Can you tell me what that means?
Yeah, so I think you're alluding to Exhibit A. We have a non-binding term sheet, and so anytime we're looking at investing in a project, we use a term sheet as a tool to outline commitments and conditions tied to that investment. That then leads to the format of producing a binding project agreement, which is before you this evening. So, that is a unique component.
So, all of that has been incorporated into the...
Correct. It is now, because it's in a binding project agreement, that is incorporated.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. You know, Mr. Compton come up? If he would like to share anything.
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. President, Members of the Noblesville Council, Mr. Mayor, everyone else. First, I just want to say on behalf of Pulte Homes, thank you, and it's been a journey. Been working on this together for over five years, and I think standing before you tonight and has filed in the zoning petition that will follow, I think, is a fantastic, amazing, $700 million investment by all of us in the City of Noblesville and in its future. I've been doing this 35 years, and I'm getting the chills standing here tonight. I think it's the neatest project I've ever been involved in. Multi-generational, mixed-use, six different product types, spanning the, the whole span of the housing study recently done by Noblesville, with the anchor being Dell Webb, which is 55 and better, will allow people to, who've grown up in Noblesville, raised families here to stay there with grandkids, and actually in this community being multi-generational, to actually live next to them. So, I think it's an exciting community. TWG adds an exciting, another type of housing component on the corner. Todd Pyatt is also part of the team. They're here tonight. There'll be, Pyatt Builders will be building the specialty housing. There'll be no less than four different builder-developers involved in this, so it won't just all be Pulte. It'll be a team. As part of this, we both work diligently and want to thank HSE for coming to the table. And we'll be able to extend sewers over into Wayne Township and also to the Hager parcel in Phase One to the south. We'll be able to open that up immediately, make it shovel-ready for its type of opportunity. Over the course of a 25-year period, this project will produce, in our estimation, $62 million of economic benefit to the City of Noblesville to be used at your discretion to improve Wayne Township and what the council, this council and future councils were served fit. At its peak, that will approach $3 million a year in free cash flow from the taxes generated by the Tiff, which is about 1.5 times, but is the amount generated in all the Tiff districts in the City of Fishers this year. So, we're excited to be here tonight, available for any questions you may have. And I'm very grateful for the entire Noblesville team, council, mayor's office, Andrew and his team, planning staff, engineering, and the county surveyor for getting this, us to the point where we can stand in front of you tonight, able to answer any questions you may have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Compton?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Has this, this has not been through ARB?
No, no. We have applied as part of the zoning to the ARB process. We'll be going through that as part of zoning where the, not only, I guess, the city and now an outside consultant will both be looking at all the elevations that have been submitted by Pulte, Mr. Todd Pyatt, and other players.
Okay. And it's not been through Plan Commission? What's, I guess, when will this come back to us?
I'm going to defer to Rex.
We stay on track.
I'm sorry. Rex Ramage is my navigator of Pulte, so I'll defer.
For the record, Rex Ramage, Pulte Homes. This would come before you for a council introduction for the zoning and preliminary development plan component on the 29th of this month, so two weeks from today. And then you mentioned ARB. That's not yet scheduled. You know, you have the new outside agency that's going to help with that process. So, that's, that should happen probably early September. Plan Commission will be September 18th, and then council in October.
What's a realistic groundbreaking date?
Groundbreaking, most likely...
Three years ago?
Yeah. Would be over the winter, actually. We'd like to start on reconstruction of two legal drains to the north and the south that would future, end up actually opening up even more ground for development that's right now encumbered by those drains. We would also like to work on a proposed lift station along 156th Street that would open up the Hager piece. And then earthmoving activities would start in the spring of 2024.
Question came up in Finance Committee about how much, this is sort of considered regional detention, and Andrew Murray not being in the Engineering Department was unable to answer the question about how much ground affects this north and south of this project? And this is really...
Well, we keep adding to it is the situation. So, it, originally, the project was 450 acres, but now we picked up the Craigcroft piece in the northwest corner, and also Copperleaf was added in discussions with the city. So, we're basically almost, with the exception of a small part that goes to the north, handling all the detention in a six, over six, almost 600 acres. So, there's, the three lakes in the center encompass about 30 acres. The south lake is 13 acres by itself. And there is a two-mile walking trail that'll be open to the public around that. So, it truly consolidates all the drainage from this entire area plus into one area.
Any other questions for...
What's the timing, Dave, on the utility relocation? Have you had discussions with Duke?
Yes, we've had the opportunity to have discussions with Duke. Multiple discussions with Duke. I think realistically, those are 2027. They cut the Dell Webb from southwest-east to the corner. They clipped the corner of the trees up on the north end there, about. They go like this, right across. So, and then clip up through there. Yep. And so, that allows us to develop about 50% of the Dell Webb before we move the power lines. That allows us to build that Tiff increment for both the city and for Pulte before they necessarily need to be moved. So, we would say 2027, and it's about a 15-month period. You know, we looked at, you know, different opportunities, even asked if we could bury them. Because they're 169 KV's, which is a transmission line, they actually need to be out in the air to cool. You can imagine what's going on with power lines right now in the, in the heat we've got. But it, it was cost prohibitive to bury them, even at that price, which was surprising to us. But the relocation cost is every bit of the number that is allocated to that.
Yeah, I think you answered my question. That's not going to stop you from working on the west side of the property.
No. Or, or even the first half of the Dell Webb.
Mr. Air?
Mine's mainly a comment and maybe a question for either you, Dave, or for Mr. Murray. This project's probably the largest project that, that I've seen in 20 years. It's substantial. 1,938 residents, 495 potential apartments, 100 detached units for sale, and 1,343 single families. I don't know of another project we've got in front of us in 20 years that equals this. And I don't necessarily have a problem with, with the project. I do have a concern and, and an issue with the $10.8 million bomb that we're floating, but that's, that's here and over there. That's my concern. I guess my, my biggest concern is we make sure we get this right, that the city, that Pulte, the developer, that we make this project right. It's going to set the tone for Wayne Township for the next 20 years. You're the first guy in the box. And the pictures that I'm seeing, while they look okay, they, they're not detailed. We've got a lot of details to go through. The renderings that are in here, I suppose are just exhibits, and they aren't necessarily ARB-approved. So, what you bring in front of ARB and that consultant, hopefully, we grind this thing down and get it to where it's going to be an asset for many years to come, because once it's built, it's here for a long time.
Yep. We, we concur.
Mr. Boyce?
Mr. President, I just wanted to comment. I'm excited, especially about the public roads, the utility upgrades out there, including the roundabout, the utilities. Those are some upgrades that we needed, so I'm excited about that. And I definitely think that the active adult is something that we need more of. And so, that should be really good. So, because of those reasons, then I'm going to support this piece tonight. But I kind of echo a little bit of what Mr. Air said. I, I know Mr. Peterson, Mr. Smith, and I went to see the ones, your Dell Webb project in Westfield, really liked it, and it could, and it probably is. Just me, I never look at an elevation and then after it's built, see what it, what it looked like on paper, and it's probably just I can't visualize it. But they don't look as nice as what we saw in Westfield, so I'm hoping they are, and it's just me. But I just would echo a little bit of that. And then the other thing I was going to mention, you already mentioned, was the utilities. I really wish there is a way we can get those underground. Sounds like it may be prohibitive, but I just think from a safety standpoint and everything, I'd really love it if we could get those underground. But that was going to be my two main comments for the committee.
Thank you.
Just two questions real fast. Can you talk a little bit about the TWG product on the southwest? What that will include and what that future Phase Two looks like?
I'm going to turn it over to Chase Smith with TWG on that.
Yep.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Chase Smith. I'm the Vice President of Market Rate Development at TWG. So, I lead the team that does projects like this all across the country. I would be remiss if I did mention I'm from Noblesville. I'm a native, so I think you guys have to be a little nicer to me. Counselor Davis, I was in Carly's grade, actually. I was in your daughter's grade, I believe. Again, go easy on me, everybody. This is 295 units there on the southwest corner. As we've mentioned today, market-rate multifamily housing. This is a product type that TWG does, as I mentioned, all over the country. We're doing a very similar deal in Raleigh, Pittsburgh, Westfield. Actually, I wish we could have toured you on a couple of our projects under construction over there near Grand Park and Chatham, Chatham Village. This will be a mix of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units. Typical amenities in a project like this would be yoga room, fitness room, bicycle storage rooms, resident lounge. And I think one thing, because I think our renderings actually are pretty detailed, if we could zoom in, we were able to incorporate a kind of pass-through that goes from the southwest to the northeast corner of our spite specifically, kind of a nice trail connection that we plan on piping into the trails that Pulte's installing around there. around their detention ponds. And our thought there, and working with staff as well, was bring people up from the existing trails through our development into Pulte's trails, and really create kind of that, you know, that active lifestyle that we find renters are asking for more and more. There would also be a kind of central green space right in the middle of our site, because we had the room for it. And again, with the amount of dogs, we're always astounded how many of our renters have dogs, even in a downtown location. And so this, you know, we anticipate a lot of canine residents as well. And then, again, you can see at the southwest corner of our site, so facing the, what will be the roundabout, we have a kind of pedestrian plaza as well. So we have the space for things like that in this project. We don't always. I was joking with Dave, you know, a lot of our projects are on half of an acre in downtown Pittsburgh or downtown Indianapolis, quite the opposite out here. So we're extremely excited about this project. I think we've got a really good base of architectural styles right here, that, again, we worked with staff and Pulte and Andrew on. So that can always change, and I'm sure it will, and we'll chip away at it and make it look even better. But what you see tonight is, I'd say, very, very, very close to what we'll end up at, and we're very excited about it. So one thing, you know, one thing we always get pushed back on with apartments is the school system, and I can, I'd be happy to provide you guys data about that as well. Typically, we just don't have very many kids in any of these apartment units that we do anywhere. The most children we'll have is a family looking to buy a home here in Noblesville. We call them, you know, first families. They might have just had a one-year-old, so they're signing a one-year lease while they look for a home, right? But again, typically, you know, we're young professionals. So this is your son or your daughter who just graduated from IU, they work, you know, Carmel, Westfield, maybe downtown, if they want a long commute, and that's who's living here, young professionals.
What's your mix of bedrooms, ones, twos?
I believe it would be about 60% one-bedrooms and then 20% twos and threes.
And there's also a retail component, correct?
There is. Thank you for reminding me. We have committed to a 10,000-square-foot retail establishment in our first phase. Whether that ends up one establishment or, you know, three, not quite sure, but we have committed to that total square footage. And then on the Phase Two, that's a little bit more open to future interpretation and market demands. I think it would look very, very, very similar to what you see right here, maybe a little slimmed down, just in terms of size, because we do have the capability to add the for-sale component as well. Those would be likely townhomes that you've seen elsewhere in Hamilton County. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The only thing I would add is that they do rent to Purdue students also. You mentioned only IU. Yeah, I put two through IU and one through Purdue, so I don't want to leave my daughter out.
Any other questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I would move that we approve Resolution RC-38-23 as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Resolution RC-38-23. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Eight, those abstentions, those against? One? Eight to one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council comments? Good? Good? Okay, we are adjourned.